Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Alt.
Here.
Mr. Beistall. Mr. Calero.
Here.
Mr. Frye. Mrs. Love.
Here.
Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Here.
Mrs. Shipley. Mr. Benz.
Here.
Samantha Gray.
Here.
Hudson Nicholson.
The records show that Hudson has a soccer game this evening and Mrs. Shipley has an employment obligation.
Citizens comments?
No comment cards this evening, sir.
Thank you. Discussion minutes? Approval minutes?
It's recommended that the board approve the minutes of the September 3rd, 2015 discussion session and the September 10th, 2015 voting meeting.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mr. Beistall, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes eight zero, one absent. Citizens in finance fund accounts?
It is recommended that the board approve the September 2015 board summary, fund accounting check summary, and the September 2015 treasurer's report.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mr. Calero, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall? Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight zero, one absent. Authorization to begin revenue anticipation note process?
It is recommended that the board authorize Mr. James Marnell, business manager, to start contacting banks in the event that the district has to obtain a revenue anticipation loan if necessary.
Need a motion please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Calero, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight zero, one absent. Seeing their old business, new business, Johnson Controls.
It is recommended that the board approve a memorandum of understanding with Johnson Controls to complete an 80-20 investment grade audit.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Questions or comments? Mr. Alt?
I brought it up before when we talked about this. At this point, it still doesn't cost us anything, right?
That's correct. Mr. Frye, can you confirm that?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Because like I said, my concern was should we want to close with Ross Steel or Alberton or whatever we may do with them. You know, how much money do we stand to lose if we accept this?
Right. Right now, it's nothing. This is merely to give you enough information to make that kind of a good decision down the road.
Mrs. Love, is that the same question?
That was the same question.
Anybody else? Roll call please.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight zero, one absent. Eastern Mennonite University?
It is recommended that the board approve an agreement between Eastern Mennonite University and the Southmoreland School District which allows nursing interns to complete field experience at Southmoreland.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mr. Frye, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Love. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight zero, one absent. E-Academy?
It is recommended that the board approve a one-year agreement with Westmoreland Intermediate Unit to provide students with E-Academy services for the 2015-2016 school year.
Need a motion please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Love, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistall. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight zero, one absent. Need a motion to suspend the rule for student report? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Student report please.
Congratulations to September's Scotty Scholar, Brianna Lutter. Congratulations also to September's Spirit of Southmoreland student, Madeline Snyder. YEA News. Dues are being collected now for $7 or $15 with an official club t-shirt. You've Got a Friend Day at Twin Lakes presented by Westmoreland County Parks was held Wednesday, October 7th, and was open to all junior and senior YEA members. Pop Goblin Hike is scheduled for Friday, October 23rd at Mammoth Park. This event is open to all YEA members. The ninth grade orientation was held on August 24th. All incoming freshmen received their 2015-2016 schedules and were able to tour the building along with their parents. The Fall Dance will be held on November 4th from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Picture Day retakes are on October 15th. The PSAT test will be given the morning of Wednesday, October 14th. Interested junior students may sign up in the guidance office for a fee of $16. Congratulations to the 2015 and 2016 Coral Officers. President Nadine Matthews. Vice President Dylan Kaufman. Secretary Lillian Fulham. Treasurer Casey McKnight. Congratulations to Katie Kimmel, Jason Monroe, and Ben Wilcox for auditioning and being accepted to PMEA honors band. Also, great job to Kelsey Romanoli and Blaise Wazneski for qualifying as alternates to the honors band.
Thank you.
Thank you Samantha.
Thank you very much.
Samantha mentioned you've got a friend down. I don't know if all of you are aware of what that is. Throughout our intermediate unit, IU7, students with disabilities have an opportunity to spend a day at Twin Lakes Park and they're partnered with a non-disabled junior or senior from one of the various schools. Were you involved in that at all?
Yes, I was.
How many students did we have from Southmoreland in terms of juniors and seniors approximately?
I believe there was about 30 juniors and 50 seniors.
Okay, so we sent about 80 students to partner with disabled kids to make sure they had a fun day at Twin Lakes Park and there are all kinds of activities. And I think there's some horseback riding and trail walks and...
Boats.
Boat riding, all kinds of things. Proud of our kids for doing that. Thank you.
I heard from a parent and an aide that said it was phenomenal. You guys did a great job.
It was a great day. We actually got paired up with some elementary and primary students actually from our school. So it was Southmoreland on Southmoreland. It was really fun.
That's neat. So thank you for doing that for us.
Need a motion to adjourn, I'm sorry, recess for personnel and...
Tax litigation concerning Scottsdale Housing.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Second by Mrs. Rhodes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes eight zero, one absent. Personnel, FMLA?
It is recommended that the board approve a family medical leave for Amy Pushkas, Southmoreland Primary Center reading specialist from November 23rd, 2015 until February 22nd, 2016, understanding that those dates are approximate.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mr. Beistall, second. Second by Mr. Frye. All those in favor say... I'm sorry. Comments or questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight zero, one absent. FMLA?
It's recommended that the board approve a family medical leave for Lauren Elliott, high school Spanish teacher, beginning on or about February 26th. That would also be for a 12-week duration, up to 12 weeks per the law.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mr. Frye, second. Second by Mr. Polakowski. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight zero with one absent. Health sabbatical leave, FMLA?
It's recommended that the board approve a health sabbatical leave to elementary teacher Lisa Shinsky from October 1st, 2015 through February 23rd, 2016, followed by an FMLA for up to 12 weeks thereafter.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mr. Beistall, second. Second by Mr. Polakowski. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight zero with one absent. Long-term substitute?
It's recommended that the board approve Cassandra Bijji as a long-term substitute teacher for Lisa Shinsky at the contracted rate of Step B1 minus $5,000.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second by Mrs. Love. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight zero with one absent.
Cassie, congratulations. Want to wave and say hello?
Welcome.
I assured these guys you'd do a great job for us, and I know you won't let us down, so welcome aboard.
Middle school with grade roll, I'm sorry, boys, basketball head coach?
It's recommended that the board employ David Barkley as middle school eighth-grade boys basketball head coach at an athletic supplemental salary of $2,914.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mr. Beistall, second. Second by Mr. Frye. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight zero with one absent. Unpaid leave?
It's recommended that the board approve an unpaid leave for the restoration of health for Sonya McNally, paraprofessional at Southmoreland Elementary School.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second by Mr. Frye. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight zero with one absent. Day-to-day aide and clerical substitute?
It is recommended that the board approve the addition of Stephanie Band to the day-to-day aide secretarial substitute list.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mrs. Love, second. Second by Mr. Beistall. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight zero with one absent. Contract extension?
It is recommended that the board approve a two-year contract extension to head football coach Mark Adams through the 2017-2018 school year.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mr. Beistall, second. Second by Mr. Frye. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes? Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero with one abstention and one absent. Board reports? Student reports already been taken care of. CWCTC report?
Our meeting was held on Wednesday, September 16th. We approved Principal Eric Westerndorf to attend Safe Schools Conference in Hershey. That brought on discussion of safety at the VOTEC and we discussed having monthly safety meetings, emergency plans, et cetera, using outside professionals to help with our emergency plans. We awarded contracts to Don Hew Incorporated, the lowest bidder for replacement of the walk-in cooler in the freezer at a cost of $72,600. The interior of the cooler was delaminating and was repaired several times by the maintenance department. The final time it was repaired, a mold issue was present. It was decided that the full replacement was necessary due to the age of the freezer box and compressor. Awarded another contract to Limbach Company for $54,000 to fabricate and install an above-ground four-inch heating line to replace an existing underground line. Granted permission to hire two paraprofessionals at $14.46 an hour. Approved nominations for the 2016 PSBA offices. CWCTC is revising and adding policies, just as we do here, on job-related expenses, board procedures, and purchases budgeted where the ones revised. That concludes my report.
Thank you. WIU report?
We made general operating decisions. We assigned some new committee, head committee members, and we had a spokesman there, a circuit rider spokesman, who came to talk to us about state funding and the state funding calculator.
Thank you. Superintendent report?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah, PSBA's on.
Didn't have my... You don't get one.
That's okay.
I just wanted to report the Pennsylvania Auditor General on Tuesday released an 81-page report summarizing what he said was his most difficult examination of a state agency. Eugene D. Pasquale said that the State Department of Education was slow to change, apathetic, and mired in bureaucratic ineptness. He slammed the department for doing little or nothing to help improve 561 schools who were identified as low performing two years ago. Also, for not updating its master education plan in 16 years and for letting a former education secretary collect a $140,000 consulting paycheck for essentially doing no work. Quote, "To me, it is a dereliction of duty," end quote, he said. "Our job is to give every kid an equal shot." Right now, this is not happening in Pennsylvania. And the report contained 30 recommendations including rethinking aspects of institutional structure, establishing clear criteria for defining poor performing schools, and creating an office or bureau to assist those schools. The findings that D. Pasquale said was the most troubling was the lack of support for hundreds of low-performing schools following the 2013-14 academic year. Quote, "Why even bother labeling these low-performing schools if you're not going to do something about it?" end quote. Nicole Regelman, an Education Department spokesman, said in a statement that officials there have reviewed the Auditor General's findings and would be taking steps to implement corrections, but did not elaborate. Also, as you all know, the budget did not pass, so we're looking at day 99 today. Tomorrow will be day 100 with no budget. And I do have some phone numbers for our state reps and our state rep and also our state senator that probably would be a good idea to call. It would be Senator Pat Stefano, and the local number is 724-626-1611. Ryan Warner is the state rep. And I have two numbers for him actually. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 9 o'clock to 4:30, his perioplis office is open. That number is 724-736-2290. Also, he has an office in the Scottsdale Library. And apparently, somebody's there the first and third Wednesdays of the month. And that number would be 724-887-6140. So I think it would be a good idea for everybody to call. Also, you can get on the internet and look up the Harrisburg number. I'm not sure where they're at right now, whether they're still in Harrisburg or where, but evidently, we need to say, "Hey, guys, you know, let's get moving here." Because some of the school districts aren't in as good shape as we are. We're very fortunate that we don't have to take a loan out yet, but the fact is, we authorized Mr. Marnell to look into it, so it's not something that's in the distant future. It's in the more near future. One other thing I just wanted to touch on real quick. Last Friday, we had a speaker. His name's Ron James. I think you remember Principal Masho talking about him coming. Well, I went to the program. There were two programs. He did one for the sixth and seventh graders and he did one for the eighth graders. Mr. Polakowski was there also. And I have to say, I was very impressed with the children. They were very well behaved. They were very informed. They listened. They asked very good questions, and I was very proud of them. Also, the program, I thought, was very, very good. In fact, Mr. James, I talked to him on Monday. He called and wanted to know what my thought was on the program. And he said that he was very impressed with the students. He said they were very engaging. He was impressed with the staff, and he thought that we had beautiful facilities. In fact, he would like to come back maybe and do something with the high school. So I thought it was very successful, and hopefully, the children did pay attention. And if there was somebody that was thinking about maybe a wrong choice down the road or something here in the future, maybe they'll hear or remember what he said. So just wanted to again thank him publicly and also Mr. Masho in the middle school. It was a good program.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Superintendent report?
Yeah, we're currently planning for upcoming Act 80 Day, which is scheduled for Monday, October 12th. I put a copy of the agenda at your tables just so you can have an idea what we're doing on that day. Most of our work will deal with aligning our curriculum to the PA Common Core standards and also the development of student learning objectives in grades K to 12. We're also providing an opportunity for employees to receive a flu shot, and that helps to promote employee wellness and also minimize absenteeism during the winter months. As most of you probably know, administrators have been engaged in collective book studies for the past several years. Our current selection is by Charlotte Danielson, and it's actually the Framework for Teaching Evaluation Instrument. This is a new instrument that we're using with both teachers and principals this year. By reading and discussing this as a group, we hope to be able to implement the Pennsylvania Teacher Effectiveness Model with both consistency and fidelity across the district. Third item I have, a consortium of schools, businesses, and agencies has come together to form the Westmoreland County Forum for Workforce Development. And the mission of this group is to connect business and education through coordinated opportunities which will improve workforce quality and economic development. I've attended several of these meetings, and next month, I will present the board with a resolution asking that the district formally endorse and support the mission of this group. And that is a no-cost item for the board. It's merely supporting the efforts of the group. We got word from our insurance company. You might remember, a month or so ago, we had a sprinkler issue in our cooler. That will be covered under our insurance as an equipment failure, so that's good news. So the only thing that we will be responsible for will be the deductible, which is, I believe, $25,000, which is significantly less than we lost. Each year, we review and update our emergency operations plan, both at the district and building level. We're sending a representative to a regional training on this topic in the very near future, and we will again update our plans to conform with the standards set forth by the Commonwealth and Emergency Management Agencies. And that echoes what Jason said. They're doing the same thing in CWCTC. So this is an ongoing process. Finally, Mr. Marnell and I, every month, we attend the Westmoreland County Public Schools Healthcare Rate Stabilization Consortium meetings. And we do this year after year, month after month. The consortium is made up of 16 districts in the county plus the three CTCs. And right now, the consortium is in the process of selecting a vendor to provide an employee assistance program. The employee assistance program is intended to help employees deal with personal problems that might adversely impact their job performance, their health, or their well-being. EAPs generally include short-term counseling and referral services for employees and their household members. And supervisors may also refer employees based on unacceptable performance or conduct issues. So I know a couple districts in the county already have EAPs that they've done in-house. Most of us did not, so this is an opportunity for every school district in the county to have an employee assistance program through our insurance consortium. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Solicitor's report?
The only thing I have was to request the board deal with this resolution.
Just a...
Yes. Be it resolved that the solicitor is authorized to engage in the services of a professional real estate appraisal expert, Real Estate Appraisal and Marketing Associates, Inc., and its president, Richard J. Durzwicki, for the purposes of appraisal, consultation, and litigation support concerning the tax appeal of Scottsdale Housing LP at Westmoreland number 5874 of 2014 at the rate of $150 per hour for the professional and $50 per hour for staff, but not to exceed $3,000, all as per the attached letter and the treasurer's authorized to pay invoices therefore.
Need a motion please? Motion by Mr. Polakowski, second. Second by Mr. Beistall. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs... I'm sorry, Mr. Alt?
Mr. Alt, yes.
Mrs. Alt? I was actually going to call Mrs. Shipley. Mr. Beistall?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes eight zero with one absent.
We actually forgot to ask for public comment. So any public comment? Ask for motion to approve it as already approved.
Need a motion to approve as already approved?
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Just Dr. Marnell reminded me of something. Last week, or I'm sorry, earlier this week, I had to make some deliveries in the Uniontown School District, four different buildings. And every single building, you got like stopped at the door. You couldn't even buzz in like at our district. And then once the security guard came to the door, they would let you in. But a lot of times, even though I'm making a delivery for part of the IU that they belong to, they wouldn't even let you into the office. Some would even let you into the office but not pass the office. Some wouldn't even let you pass security into the office. And a couple of them, I told them, "I am so glad that our district has not got to this point yet, and I'm just so appreciative and grateful for the communities that we have that we don't have to get to that point yet at our schools to be more like a prison or something than it is a place that we hope the kids want to come to."
Any other comments or questions from the board? Citizens comments? Motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Beistall, second by Mrs. Rhodes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes eight zero.